I hereby call the third day of the first special session of the 23rd Congress to order. May we all rise for a moment of silent prayer. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Abel Alfonso?
Myself, ma'am, amen.
Senator Arrethos? Senator Christian? Senator Vigier? Senator Collin?
Yes.
Senator Harper? Senator Conman?
Myself, ma'am.
Floor Leader Lawrence?
Lillian Martin.
Vice Speaker Romolo?
Amen.
Senator Urosomal? Senator Wally? Speaker Moses?
Aye.
Mr. Speaker, 11 members are present.
With that, we have a quorum to transact business. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Item four, reading of the Journal, Mr. Speaker.
Floor Leader.
Good morning, Mr. Speaker. I move that we dispense with the reading of the Journal.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress dispense with the reading of the Journal. If no objection, we will vote. All those in favor of the said motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now dispensed with the reading of the Journal. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Item five, presidential communications. As of now, we do not have any, Mr. Speaker.
Continue.
Item six, FSM Supreme Court communications, none also, Mr. Speaker. Item seven, member communications, none. Item eight, departmental communications, we have one and it's number 23-15.
Thank you, and I guess we need to redo our proposed sealing resolution on that one. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That is item nine, HSCR governmental authority communications. As of now, we do not have any, Mr. Speaker.
Speaker.
Chairman Vigier? Short recess. Chairman, call the chair. Congress is back in session. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That is item 10, state communications. We have one and it's number 23-05.
Please assign that. Next item.
Item 11, state Supreme Court communications, none, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Item 12, municipal or town communications, none also.
Next item.
Item 13, foreign government communications, we do not have any, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Item 14, miscellaneous communications, none, Mr. Speaker.
Order of the day.
The next item under the order of the day is item 15, standing committee reports. We have an awaiting list, number 23-01, for standing committee reports, awaiting the 24 hours requirement.
Chairman of XF, please take note of that one. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That is item 16, special committee reports. We have one and it's number 23-02 by the committee to wait on the President.
Chairman Rusmal?
Yeah, short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chairman Rusmal?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Your committee to, which was assigned to wait on the President, met with the President yesterday. Therefore, I move that report, which has been written, draft, duplicated, and distributed, be adopted. So move.
Any second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopts special committee report number 23-02. Discussion? Chairman Rusmal, you have the, you still have the floor.
Speaker, I, I know usually we have had the chairman of the committee to a summary of the report. I just was here to report that, yes, the committee met with the President just about noon yesterday. He submitted a written agenda item for the meeting to consider. Highlighting the agenda items are pending legislation that the administration wishes for Congress to take up this session, especially the nominations, the compact of free association, compact three as it's been called. The amendment to JCRP law, ratification of the compact has been submitted and asking the committee to convey to Congress about the nominations, especially for overseas missions, and wishing Congress to act on them. We also discussed what Congress had assigned the committee to discuss with the President relating to the referendum and election, which we did, and so the, all of these are contained in the report, Mr. Speaker. I therefore move for their adoption, and if any of the member who were accompanying yours truly to the administration, the two ladies and Vice Speaker wish to supplement what I had stated, they are more than free to do that. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman. Any more discussion?
Mr. Speaker? Speaker?
Floor Leader, you have the floor.
Point of information regarding the report. The paragraph regarding COVID-19 restrictions, the line where it says, "This is in order to be in line with other nations and resume normal travel." What does that mean?
Chairman Rusmal, you care to venture?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I will attempt to reply to our good floor leader, but it's also very good that we had the chairperson of the Committee on Health and Social Affairs as part of the committee. But what I recall from the meeting with the President on this issue was that he had asked or urged that the issue be taken up again to undo or remove the restriction of travel into FSM. So that's my recollection, and I think that's what the report is indicating here. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, can I just add some more?
Go ahead, Senator, Chair, Madam Chair Conman, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. The, for the recommendation from WHO and CTC is for people to receive that bivalent one-shot that contain both the Pfizer and the Moderna. That will consider as a good coverage for COVID vaccination. But for, for the countries outside, they're lifting the pan because the pandemic is resolving and even though we're still exposed, with, they're still exposed, but the number of cases are less and is, and also less severe than before. What we have currently is the one-shot recommendation of vaccine for all travelers to come to FSM. But upon that, we also have that power of the health service in FSM to monitor any cases of COVID that we have for now. And they, they, they're also given the power to endorse further restriction if the number of cases of COVID increase, increases in FSM. And their recommendation is, what they're telling us is to lift the ban or the restriction and will still to continue this, to continue the monitoring of COVID cases within FSM. So that's what they're telling us of the current status outside and what we have currently in FSM. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Any more discussion?
Speaker.
Chairman Golden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Just my curiosity of the supplemental on the request by executive. I understand that our position on this is to hold on to the referendum that as we need to understand, on the 6 million that already consider that projection is 6 million or above. What's the position on the executive? Are we gonna do a supplemental request on the half of the 6 million? That's the question to the awaiting committee.
Chairman Rusmal?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Of what I can hear, of what the good Chairman of DNC is asking relating to something about supplemental. Yes, the President mentioned, talked a little bit about supplemental coming from the executive branch, but I wasn't sure what the question may have been. As you know, maybe the other members can respond to the good Chairman on DNC about the supplemental and the issue raised.
Yes, the question is, we received the projection of 6 million and we reneged to, to action on the supplemental right away because of the referendum. If it's gonna pass, happen to pass, then this will be retroactive to July 4. So the question that I ask is, are we gonna do a supplemental on half of the 6 million?
Mr. Speaker? I don't believe, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I don't believe that was discussed thoroughly with, at the meeting. That would be really up to this body to agree whether to move or not to move on the supplemental and on how much, if we're gonna move, on how much to move and approve. I don't believe it was a task of the committee to specifically talk about supplemental. I may be wrong, but that, at least my understanding of the matter. Thank you.
Speaker? Speaker?
Chairman Vigier?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. If I may, the, I think the question is, because of the referendum, can we still go ahead and appropriate the, it's not the 6 million, it's 5 million some. There was a correction made reason, after the first one, but the, we can appropriate the money. It has no bearing on the referendum because the revenue projection was submitted to Congress before July 4. If that's what your question.
Thank you, Chairman Vigier. Any more discussion on the said report? If no objection, debate?
Speaker?
Vice Speaker?
Thank you. If I may add on the report that was presented by Chairman Rusmal. On the, the 9.5 million that we were, it was in discussion for the last several months, the committee did raise that question on the status of that 9.5 million and the President and his cabinet, key cabinet have indicated that it's, and admitted that it's a failure on their part, that there is no 9.5, actual 9.5 million. It was booked, but they weren't setting aside a cash of 9.5 million. So there is no 9.5 million. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Speaker.
If there was no 9.5 million, why was it even in the audit report?
That's a good question.
Speaker?
Chairman Rusmal?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I am, in discussing this matter, the President and the Vice President, who, especially the Vice President, who was there previously with the former administration, indicated that this is a, an issue that is in pro, I mean, work is in progress and that there are questions that were raised and unfortunately, they could not have, they could, they did not resolve the questions. They, the administration itself, this current administration, is having difficulty trying to resolve questions relating to this 9.5 million. One of the consultants indicated that the appropriation of, by Congress of the 6 million during the 23rd, 22nd? 22nd Congress, basically came out from the same bank account or from the same treasury of the FSM. And therefore, the issue, whether it's from the 9.6 or from somewhere else, it comes from the same pot of money that we have in the general fund. But the President and the Vice President both agree that this is something that needs first, further work by the administration and that they are, they are looking into trying to resolve it once and for all. Thank you.
That phrase, "once and for all," sounds really great. But when will it come?
When, thank you, Speaker, when it will come?
When it comes?
That's very much so. When, it will come when it comes and I guess in their wisdom, they hope that we can keep the issue alive and stay on their toes to make sure that the answer comes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Rusmal. Any more discussion on the said report?
Speaker? Speaker?
Chairman Golden?
Thank you, Speaker. I think on that issue, on the 9.5, I think the appropriate committee should do a oversight on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. If no objection, question has been called for. No objection, debate is closed. We will vote on the adoption of special committee report number 23-02. All those in favor of the said, adoption of the said report, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted special committee report number 23-02. Next special committee report?
None, Mr. Speaker.
Next item?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're on item number 17 for assignment of measures and communications. Can do refer to referral sheet number 23-11.
Chairman and members, please take note of the referral sheet. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Item 18, unfinished business, none, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I have some appeals to withdraw. Thank you.
Short recess. Congress come back to session. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on item number 19, bill calendar. As of now, we do not have any, Mr. Speaker.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Speaker, thank you. We have the following appeals to withdraw and place on today's calendar. CB number 2314, 2315, 2316, 2317, 2319, 2320, 2321. I saw move.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress place on today's bill calendar, CB number 23-14, 23-15, 23-16, 23-17, 23-19, 23-20, and 23-21.
No 19. 20, right? You went from 17 to 20?
If no objection?
Short recess.
Short recess. We are in discussion of the placement of CB number 23-14, 23-15, 23-16, 23-17, 23-19, 23-20, 23-21. Floor Leader?
I move that, I move to suspend any relevant rule that may impede our actions on the said, said bills.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress suspend the rules that may impede our action on the placement of the said bills, especially the one requiring reports. Any discussion? Any objection? If, if not, we will vote on the said motion to suspend the rules. All those in favor of the said motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. We will now vote on the placement of the said bills. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now placed on today's calendar for action, CB number 23-14, 23-15, 23-16, 23-17, 23-19, 23-20, 23-21. On today's bill calendar for action. Chief Clerk, first bill?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the bill calendar now is Congressional Bill number 23-14 for first reading. CB number 23-14 is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law number 22-180 as amended by Public Laws numbers 22-187, 22-188, 23-03, and 23-09 by amending sections 5 and 6 thereof for the purpose of changing the use and allotment of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Pompe and Chuk states and for other purposes.
Chairman Vigier?
Move for the passage of the bill, said bill on first reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading, CB number 23-14. Discussion?
Mr. Speaker?
Chairman Christian?
The title mentions Chuk and Pompe, but wherein the body of the bill are, is Pompe referred to.
Yeah, I noticed that too, but I think it's forthcoming, maybe tomorrow on second reading. Any more discussion on the said bill? If no objection, question has been called for. We will now vote on the passage of CB number 23-14 on first reading. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Abel Alfonso?
Amen.
Senator Arrethos?
Yes.
Senator Christian?
Yes.
Senator Vigier? Senator Collin?
Yes.
Senator Harper? Senator Conman?
Yes.
Floor Leader Lawrence?
Amen.
Vice Speaker Romolo?
Mr. Relling, yes.
Senator Urosomal? Senator Wally? Speaker Moses?
Amen.
Mr. Speaker, all 11 members that are present voted for the said bill under first reading.
With that, Congress has passed on first reading, CB number 23-14. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next bill under the bill calendar now is Congressional Bill number 23-15 for first reading. CB number 23-15 is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law number 22-37 as amended by Public Laws numbers 22-45, 22-76, and 22-178 by amending section 5 thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Chuk state and for other purposes.
Chairman Vigier?
Move for the passage of the bill on first reading?
Any second? It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass CB number 23-15 on first reading. Discussion?
Speaker?
Vice Speaker?
Thank you very, very much, Mr. Speaker. I have an oral amendment to the said bill on page 3, line 23, item T. Delete the word "water tanks" and insert "northwest leadership travel."
Make your motion?
Salmo, Mr. Speaker.
You don't need water tanks anymore?
It's been moved and seconded that the offered oral amendment made to the said bill by Vice Speaker Romolo be adopted. Discussion?
Question?
If no objection, debate is closed. We will now vote on the said oral amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. The offered floor amendment has been adopted. We are still in discussion of CB 23-15, CD1. Any more discussion? If no objection, debate is now closed. We will now vote on the passage of CB number 23-15, CD1 by rule call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Abel Alfonso?
Amen.
Senator Arrethos?
Yes.
Senator Christian?
Amen.
Senator Vigier? Senator Collin?
Yes.
Senator Harper? Senator Conman?
Yes.
Floor Leader Lawrence?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Romolo?
Amen.
Senator Urosomal? Senator Wally? Speaker Moses?
Amen.
Mr. Speaker, all 11 members that are present voted for the said bill under first reading.
For that, CB number 23-15, CD1 has now passed Congress on first reading. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next bill currently under the bill calendar is Congressional Bill number 23-16 for first reading. CB number 23-16 is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law number 22-86 as amended by Public Laws numbers 22-101, 22-102, 22-106, 22-140, 22-147, 22-168, 22-185, 22-187, and 23-06 by amending sections 5 and 6 thereof to change the use and allotment of funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding priority infrastructure projects and other public projects and social programs for the people of infrastructure projects and other public projects and social programs for the people of Chuk State and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Move for the passage of the said bill on first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass CB number twenty-three dash sixteen on first reading. Discussion?
Question?
No objection. Debate is now closed. We will now vote on passage of CB twenty-three dash sixteen on first reading by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Senator Abella Alfonso.
Amen.
Senator Aridos.
Yes.
Senator Christian. Senator Figueroa.
Yes.
Senator Collin.
Yes.
Senator Harper. Senator Conman.
Yes.
Floor leader Lawrence.
Amen.
Vice Speaker Romolo.
Amen.
Senator Urusamal. Senator Wali. Speaker Moses.
Aye.
Mrs. Speaker, all eleven members that are present voted for the said bill under first reading.
With that, Congress has passed on first reading CB number twenty-three dash sixteen. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. The next bill under the bill calendar now is Congressional Bill number twenty-three dash seventeen for first reading. CB number twenty-three dash seventeen is a bill for an act to amend Public Law number twenty-two dash one eighty-six as amended by Public Laws numbers twenty-two dash one eighty-nine and twenty-three dash oh one by amending section five thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding public projects and social programs for the people of Chuk State and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Move for the passage of the bill on first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading CB number twenty-three dash seventeen. Discussion?
Question?
No objection. Question has been called for. We will now vote on the passage of CB number twenty-three dash seventeen on first reading by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Senator Abella Alfonso.
Amen.
Senator Aridos. Senator Christian. Senator Figueroa.
Yes.
Senator Collin.
Oi.
Senator Harper. Senator Conman.
Yes.
Floor leader Lawrence.
Amen.
Vice Speaker Romolo.
Amen.
Senator Urusamal. Senator Wali. Speaker Moses.
Amen.
Mrs. Speaker, all eleven members that are present voted for the said bill under first reading.
With that, Congress has passed on first reading CB number twenty-three dash seventeen. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Currently under the bill calendar is Congressional Bill number twenty-three dash nineteen for first reading. CB number twenty-three dash nineteen is a bill for an act to further amend section eight oh five of Title fifty-four of the Code of the Federated States of Magnesia annotated as amended by Public Laws numbers eighteen dash one oh seven, twenty-one dash one fifty-two, twenty-two dash fifty-seven, and twenty-two dash one thirty-nine to authorize on an extraordinary basis that the Chuk State's share of the extra twenty percent of net taxes collected during fiscal years twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four be remitted to the municipal governments and for other purposes.
It's been moved and seconded that CB number twenty-three dash nineteen have been passed on first reading. Discussion?
Please.
Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chairman Figueroa.
Move for the passage of the bill on first reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading CB number twenty-three dash nineteen. Discussion? No objection. Question has been called for. Debate is now closed. We will now vote on passage of CB twenty-three dash nineteen on first reading by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Senator Abella Alfonso.
Amen.
Senator Aridos.
Yes.
Senator Christian. Senator Christian.
Conflict of interest, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Figueroa. Senator Collin.
Yes.
Senator Harper. Senator Conman.
Yes.
Floor leader Lawrence.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Romolo.
Amen.
Senator Urusamal. Senator Urusamal. Senator Wali. Speaker Moses.
Amen.
Mr. Speaker, eleven members voted for the said bill under first reading.
And Congress has now passed on first reading CB number twenty-three dash nineteen.
Was my conflict of interest vote counted as a yes?
Yes, it was.
I think you should call me to ask what my conflict is before you, the chief clerk makes a decision.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. Congress has now passed CB number twenty-three dash nineteen on first reading. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Under the bill calendar now is Congressional Bill number twenty-three dash twenty-four first reading. CB number twenty-three dash twenty is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law number twenty-one dash eighty as amended by Public Laws numbers twenty-one dash ninety-nine, twenty-one dash one ten, twenty-one dash one forty-three, twenty-one dash one eighty-one, twenty-one dash one eighty-eight, twenty-one dash two fourteen, twenty-one dash two forty-two, twenty-two dash nineteen, twenty-two dash thirty-eight, twenty-two dash fifty-six, twenty-two dash ninety-nine, twenty-two dash one oh seven, twenty-two dash one oh eight, twenty-two dash one forty-two, and twenty-two dash one ninety-nine by amending sections, section two thereof to change the use of funds, certain funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Yap State and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Move for the passage of the said bill on first reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass CB number twenty-three dash twenty on first reading. Discussion?
Question?
No objection. Debate is now closed. Congress will vote on CB number twenty-three dash twenty on first reading by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Senator Abella Alfonso.
Amen.
Senator Aridos.
Yes.
Senator Christian.
Amen.
Senator Figueroa. Senator Collin.
Yes.
Senator Harper. Senator Conman.
Yes.
Floor leader Lawrence.
Amen.
Vice Speaker Romolo.
Amen.
Senator Urusamal. Senator Urusamal. Senator Wali. Speaker Moses.
Amen.
Mrs. Speaker, all eleven members that are present voted for the said bill under first reading.
With that, Congress has passed on first reading CB number twenty-three dash twenty. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Speaker.
Chairman Urusamal.
Point of privilege.
State your point.
Yeah, I'd like to point out here that our staff from the Yap delegation office is here staffing our delegation and the rest of the members during this session. But to note here that he is a member of the board of YSPSC, which part of the money here is being earmarked for, and if this money appropriated and signed into law, we hope, and not implemented ASAP, we will maybe put him on suspension.
No, fire him.
Okay, we may, we may do that too. But this is an urgent, urgent need of our public corporation in Yap. So I hope if the governor is the Alati, the money be, if it's done soon, PCT will be done, and if it's Preston, the money be made available ASAP. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman. Any more? Discussion on?
Question?
If no objection, debate is now closed. We will now vote on the passage of CB number twenty-three dash short recess. Congress is back in session. Chairman Figueroa, you have the floor.
Thank you. I move that Congress passes Congress bill twenty-three dash twenty on first reading.
Second?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-three.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chairman Figueroa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move that Congress passes on first reading Congress bill number dash twenty-three, twenty-three dash twenty-one.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass CB number twenty-one, twenty-three dash twenty-one on first reading.
Second.
Discussion? Any discussion? If none, debate is now closed. We will now vote on the passage of CB number twenty-three dash twenty-one on first reading by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Senator Abella Alfonso.
Amen.
Senator Aridos.
Yes.
Senator Christian. Senator Figueroa. Senator Figueroa. Senator Collin. Senator Harper. Senator Conman.
Yes.
Floor leader Lawrence.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Romolo. Senator Urusamal. Senator Wali. Speaker Moses.
Amen.
Mrs. Speaker, all eleven members that are present voted for the said bill under first reading.
With that, Congress has passed CB number twenty-three dash twenty-one on first reading. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, as of now, we do not have any more bills.
Well, I prefer it, Speaker.
State your point. Chairman Golan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, I want the body of Congress to recognize those two children and that were sitting in our gallery. Monsieur Laurine Robert, Assistant Secretary to the President, and Margot Savo. He is the acting on health. Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause.
For members' information, the understanding of item number fifteen, standing committee reports, that was foreseen to be on the referral sheet, on the awaiting list for twenty-four hours, but signatures haven't come in, so please disregard the awaiting list mentioned in the standing committee reports, item number fifteen. Chief Clerk, next item.
Speaker. Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, as of now, we do not have any more bills.
Vice Speaker.
Yes, I wish to withdraw CP number twenty-two, twenty-three dash twenty-eight and put on today's agenda on behalf of Senator Florencio Harper. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Any second? It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on first reading CB number twenty-three dash twenty-eight. Short recess. Congress is back in session. Vice Speaker.
Motion to withdraw, I heard your motion.
Thank you. No objection, the motion has been withdrawn. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Mrs. Speaker, as of now, we do not have any more bills.
Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. That is item twenty, resolution calendar. As of now, we do not have any resolutions, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Item twenty-one, introduction of bills and resolutions.
If you have any measures to introduce, please submit them to Chief Clerk. Next item.
Item twenty-two, miscellaneous business, Mr. Speaker.
Any miscellaneous business?
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Christian, you have the floor.
Mr. Speaker, the national government and the state governments have many processes, administrative processes that are similar. But at the national government, there is one item that sets it apart from the state is its responsibility and duty to deal with foreign governments as needed. I am concerned that we have not received from the executive branch nomination for the position of Secretary of the Office of Foreign Affairs. And I'd like to recommend that somehow, in whatever means is possible, we encourage the president to submit his nomination for that position. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Christian. Yes, that is a very important role that we need urgently filled. Any more miscellaneous business?
Point of brieflets, Mr. Speaker.
State your point.
I would like to recognize Ms. Cheryl Porciti from the US Embassy.
Sitting here before.
This morning. Let's just give her a round of applause. Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Any more miscellaneous business?
Speaker, we used to have a spy from the executive branch in all our sessions. I don't see one for the last session or now unless Sokuto or Marcus have been designated today's spies.
I believe they are. Any more miscellaneous business?
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Christian.
Yes, I'd like to say again my concern about the treatment that the FSM is receiving from the United States Congress's caucus, Freedom Caucus, in their introduction of a bill in the US Congress to appropriate only three point eight million dollars for the, for the compact payments for fiscal year FY twenty-four. If I'm not mistaken, that's what I read. It bothers me that after all the effort of discussing the compact renegotiation between the United States and us, that this group in the US Congress would come up and exercise their right to speak and target it against us. I would think that they would have more important things to do than our small selves here. I don't know how we can help correct some of these misgivings, but perhaps, Mr. Speaker, you could through your office as speaker, find a way to begin to address this group directly with them or through members that we know in Congress.
Thank you, Chairman Christian. It's well noted. I have also read the, the report on that. Any more miscellaneous business?
Speaker.
Chairman Urusamal.
Just sharing two small items that were discussed yesterday in our meeting with the president. Number one, on the issue of transportation, especially sea transportation, which basically are the road to our smaller communities, outer islands. The president is working very diligently to see if we can get assistance from
working very diligently to see if we can get assistance from our toner countries. Any of them that would be willing to maybe fund vessels, but mostly especially from Japan. Number two, for the inauguration on the 26th, I am happy to report, even though I brought mine suit and tie, that the inauguration attire will be whatever is
Second, Mr. Speaker.
called island formal.
Second.
So, no suit and tie. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman.
Accept no two by Senator Urusamal?
Alangan, thank you. Any more miscellaneous business?
Speaker.
Chairman Golan?
Thank you. Yesterday is my birthday yesterday, but I don't know if those plates put your cake in the box, your boxes, but please, after session, you might check or somebody already took it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Golan, for sharing your birthday cake with members. Any more miscellaneous business?
Speaker.
Floor Leader?
Yeah. I have been informed through, I've been informed that the Congress receives my annual fund status reports for the public projects by law. And I've been informed that that hasn't been done by the Finance Department as of late. So I'm just wondering, when are they going to do that again? Because I raised that in light of us, the new members, needing to know fund statuses and all relevant information regarding public projects, and therefore, and anything related to that.
Thank you. Thank you, yes, we've been, everyone's been waiting for their fund status reports, but it hasn't been forthcoming. But I'll certainly raise that issue up with the relevant people sometime today. Any? Any more miscellaneous business?
Speaker.
Who's that?
Speaker.
Chairman Golan, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Move that we stand in recess and coming back tomorrow at 10:00.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress stands in recess until tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. in the morning. No objection. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress stands in recess until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning.